All right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular scheduled city council meeting of Wednesday, June 26, 2024. Let the record show that all councillors are present. We'll move on to ads and deletes. Add consent agenda number one. Add departments committee reports number one A and number two B. Delete boards and commissions. Could I have approval of the agenda?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Swyberger.
Support.
Support by councillor Fossil. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to add the ordinance of City of Hibbing, amending Hibbing City Code Chapter 10 entitled Public Protection Crimes and Offenses by amending section 10.05 entitled Feeding of Pigeons and by adopting by reference Hibbing City Code Chapter 1 and section 10.99, which among other things contain penalty provisions. And that would be under attorney Andy Borland, please.
All right, later.
Candy? No, we're not.
We're not gonna do that one? Okay, I don't know.
That's good. We'll have to take up another.
Okay, we'll take it up another time?
Yeah.
All right, very. So it won't be under five either? Very good. Okay, so any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Right now, we have oath of office for four new officers. All right now, I, having been duly appointed.
Aye.
Thank you.
Oath of office, having been.
Thank you.
As a police officer of the city, then.
As a police officer for the city of Hibbing.
Do hereby solemnly swear that I will defend.
I solemnly swear I will defend.
And force and obey the Constitution.
Force and obey the Constitution.
Of the United States and the laws of the state of Minnesota.
Of the United States and the laws of the state of Minnesota.
I will faithfully and partially discharge.
I will faithfully and partially discharge.
The duties of a police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Oh, in the back, the very last word. Yeah, okay. Really? Oh, okay, up here? Oh, he was a good one, obviously. Pete, that's the guy who's not very happy with me.
In the white shirt?
In the plaid shirts, isn't it?
Okay. We'll move on to approval minutes. Approve the minutes of regular Hibbing City Council meeting of June 5, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Swy.
Either one's fine.
That's okay. Councillor Bayless?
Yeah.
Support. Councillor Swyberger? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Approve the minutes of the Hibbing City Council workshop meeting of June 5, 2024. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by councillor Fossil.
Support.
Support by councillor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda number one. Approve the accounts payable dated 6/14/2024. Checks number 177495 through 177617 in the amount of $2,827,823.47. 6/20/2024 checks number 177618-177647 in the amount of $110,332.72. 6/26/24 checks number 177648 through 177683. Voided 177684 through 17719 in the amount of $557,671.1. Two, approve the city payroll for pay period ending 6/21/2024 in the amount of $619.118.13. Three, accept the place on file. The Hibbing Police Department Activity Report for May 2024. Four, authorize mayor to send 11 support of the Crescendo Youth Orchestra to the Minnesota State Arts Board and Regional Council for Arts Experience Grant. Five, authorize the updated automotive mechanic job description. Six, approve to place a temporary full-time equipment operator to position on hold effective immediately. Seven, authorize the hire of Jared Sambord for the full-time skilled labor pre-employment contingencies. Eight, authorize the posting of full-time city service maintenance position. Nine, approve the advancement of Brittany Dillinger to patrol too with the Hibbing Police Department effective June 27, 2024. Ten, authorize the hire of Jill Rini for the full-time library director position effective July 1, 2024. Eleven, authorize the hire of Eric Sambord for seasonal maintenance position pre-employment contingencies. Twelve, authorize the hire of Jacob Mackey Christian Massich for the public work summer, effective June 27, 2024. Thirteen, authorize the signing of the new RCB agreement for collection of liquid ambulance accounts. Fourteen, set the next regular meeting for Wednesday, June 10, 2024 at 5:00 PM in the Hibbing City Hall council chambers. Fifteen, set the next city council workshop for Wednesday, July 10, 2024, following the regular meeting in the Hibbing City Hall council chambers. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
We have a motion by councillor Hoffman-Sokman.
Support.
Support by councillor Hildebrand. Any discussion?
Um, Mayor number 14, I think, um, June, July 10. You said June 10.
Oh, I'm sorry, July 10, 2024 at 5:00 PM. Thank you for the correction. Any other discussion?
I did.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Consent agenda has passed. We now will move on to the open forum. We do have a full house. One thing that I ask, and I, our fire chief had asked that we do leave a lane through so that we can get through to that door. Uh, the capacity is about where this building can hold, so, or this room can hold. As long as we keep the walkway open, we'll be good with everybody that's in here. And I thank you for coming. Uh, thank everybody for attending. It's good to see a full house and so many engage in what your passion and what we're doing. Citizens Forum, basically, is five minutes. Uh, I think we have 13 people that will be speaking. The council does not take any action on, uh, the items. It is a listening session. Please state your name and address for the record. Uh, once you come to the podium, and you'll have up to five minutes. I will be timing that. And if you get at four minutes, I will raise my hand just so you know you're getting close to the end so you can close. Any questions on that? At that point, I welcome everybody, uh, to come forward. I'll start with, uh, Jeff Philippich would be the first one to talk. Is Jeff in the room? Okay, Jeff. The one thing I ask everybody, these are, these are a good listening session, uh, that we let everybody who's speaking have a chance to speak so everybody can be heard, so we can hear what he has to say. Jeff, please, your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeff Philippich, and I'm with the Center City Housing Corporation Development Group that's working on the Cobb Cook Plaza.
Okay. Very good. All right, your five minutes just started.
Great, well, thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, city staff for allowing me to make a couple of comments here, uh, as part of the development team, um, that's been working on this project for, goodness, probably about four years now. Um, I've been on it for the last year, and it certainly is something near and dear to me because I grew up here on the range. And, um, the amount of investment that's gonna come in to the community really is gonna sustain and grow the job base, that's for sure. Um, so what we do, Center City, as an affordable housing developer, we work all over Minnesota. We're based in Duluth, but, um, about 30 years that we've been doing affordable housing development. Uh, this morning, we actually just grand, re-grandopened our Winwood Townhomes in Duluth. That was an $18 million project, um, with Minnesota Housing as well. Um, the HRA project here in Hibbing is, uh, just supported by so many professionals, folks who are tops in their field, have been doing this work for decades. And, um, I've been just really, uh, impressed. And I'm learning a lot as well too, as a developer, just working with these folks, uh, that Jackie's put together on the, uh, on the development team. Um, the city too, just wanted to say thank you so much to everybody in the city. I'm sorry, getting some feedback there. Apologize about that. Um, been amazing to work with. We work with cities and counties all over the state. And, um, this is a city that has a can-do kind of attitude, has been a problem solver, been at the table all the way, and, and really has just helped, uh, everybody get to the point where we're ready to go in for the application and get stuff done. So, uh, you know, growing up here on the range, I wanted to mention that, you know, this affordable housing project and programs, it creates this multiplier effect of a decrease in use of emergency services in the community. Um, police, fire, EMS, uh, decreases homelessness, of course, uh, access to food and healthcare. And of course, just ultimately provides a place for everyone to call home. Um, and that's, that's really all, that's the goal of, of the whole development world that, that we live in at Center City is to develop the place that folks can grow their families and call home. Um, so to be working on a project that brings 25 some odd million dollars into the city of Hibbing and of course, the Iron Range with some amazing partners, including the city here, but the IRR, uh, the state, um, you know, bonding money and that kind of thing that came through. Uh, just really proud, uh, to, to help bring this to fruition. And thank you so much for your time. Um, lastly, just wanted to mention, uh, we, on our, uh, project that just completed down in Duluth, the Winwood Townhomes, 90% of the work was done by local trades. Uh, we also had a project labor agreement and worked through all of the different, uh, folks down at the Union Temple to get that stuff done. And that's something we press our generals on constantly is to make sure that that money stays home. Thank you. Looking forward to talking with you again in the future.
Thank you so much. Uh, before we move to the next one, Mr. Borland, uh, could you summarize, uh, just so everybody understands what the action the city council took during the June 5 meeting?
Uh. Mayor, Mayor members of the council, back on June 5 of this year, the council passed a motion agreeing to convey part of the property that makes up the park at Cobb Cook to the Hibbing Housing and Redevelopment Authority. That conveyance to, uh, the HRA was contingent upon the HRA receiving its request for funding to build the, uh, project that, uh, Ms. Prescott presented at the June 5 meeting. And it's my understanding that Ms. Prescott don't know the answer, uh, whether or not she'll receive the funding until approximately December of, uh, 2024. The council that evening also voted to waive referring them, the transfer of the property to the planning commission for its review before that. Uh, someone else had asked me a question about, uh, transfers so that the purchase agreement with the HRA conveyed or provided for nominal consideration, as in the city was gonna essentially sell it to them for a dollar. That isn't a unique circumstance for the city to do with respect to the, and I use the example, the Habitat for Humanity homes. Uh, the city works as a conduit through those for the county, the Habitat for Humanity to get those homes. And those are other situations in which the city isn't charging Habitat for Humanity for the consideration for those properties. Those were the actions primarily with regard to June 5 that the council took that evening. Thank you.
All right. Uh, next up would be, uh, Ms. Bertram. Again, please state your name and, uh, address, and then you will have five minutes.
My name is Heather Bertram. Um, my address is 525 East 33rd Street, Hibbing. Not in our neighborhood. I've heard that phrase a lot lately and would like to take a few minutes to tell you about our community. We have people that work in many fields such as healthcare, education, childcare, auto parts stores, bars and restaurants, hotels, food and shopping businesses. Those people feed your children, clean up after you and your family, educate and care for your children and celebrate with you. Most of us work hard, sometimes working two and three jobs. We hold ourselves and each other accountable and request further assistance when needed. We watch out for each other's kids, knowing ours are being watched up for as well. It is not uncommon that we feed more than just our kids. We babysit each other's kids because, one, daycare is expensive. Two, we know they will be safe. Three, they will be fed. We are more than just neighbors. We are a community, a family really. Most of us get more emotional support and encouragement from our neighbors than our own family. We have big barbecues for birthdays, holidays, or just because it's a nice day. Everyone pitches in and we're grateful for our community. We would like to thank our maintenance team of three for all of their hard work and creativity in piecing our homes with discontinued, piecing together our homes with discontinued parts. We know it's a lot of work to do repairs on four different properties throughout Hibbing and still maintain patience and kindness with us. From our understanding, there will be a park at the new proposed location, which would be at the far end of the block. And we will, it will be safer and more secure for everyone's children to play at. We also have access to the Empower Program, which is a huge resource to assist us in learning to better ourselves, our situations, and to learn to become more self-sufficient. There are more residents working on getting GEDs, attending college, finding better jobs, and much more to fulfill their personal goals. In the last 18 months, I know of five people living here that have moved on to buying their own homes. The new homeowners come back to participate in our community as they're still a part of our community. They provide encouragement, insight, and support for our futures. And in turn, we are happy they are successful. This is our neighborhood. Lastly, I would like to thank Jackie and the board for seeing the terrible condition our housing is in and for coming up with a plan to fix it. Thank you for seeing our potential and supporting us.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, up next will be Erin Ningen.
Hi, y'all. We meet again.
Erin, name and address. Thank you.
Erin Ningen, 2719, Third Avenue West.
Thank you.
Two blocks, three blocks from Cobb Cook. I stand before you today not just as a concerned citizen, but as a voice for many in our community who are deeply troubled by the lack of transparency in this project. The decision to sell Cobb Cook Park for a mere dollar to HRA has been a shock to all of us. Others will speak about the impact of this decision. I would like to address the manner in which it was reached without any opportunity for public input. We've been down this road before. Um, a few years ago, when you decided to buy the buildings by the memorial building, you started negotiations in July, and we learned of the project approximately two weeks before you cut the check and bought the building. Um, this, I understand, was started two years ago. Um, and the public didn't learn about it until 48 hours before you sold the park or before you voted to sell the park. Um, I understand there's been a purchase agreement signed since. None of you ran for public office because you craved sitting in a hot room, having people criticize you. Um, some of you even ran because you wanted to create a better Hibbing. I gotta tell you, it's not working. You can't create a better Hibbing without the, without the help of the people who live here. Um, you can't create change by doing same things the same old, same old way. Um, now we're learning about some kind of secretive, some, I don't know if it's secretive, but, but the public is not well-informed at all about these plans at, to develop what they call Highland Park or what most people call Pill Hill. Um, we understand there's some kind of development in the works that just can't be changed because we're too far along in the process. That would be a perfect location, um, on the front side, on the beltline side of, of that property, which I understand you may not be developing, but details are always vague in Hibbing with the city council. And that's a big part of the problem. Um, the open meeting law specifically bars, bars you from using committee of the whole meetings or work, HITA calls them workshops, that are working sessions, specifically bars you from using those as a tool to avoid informing the, the public. I understand that those meetings are recorded by HPAT, and I'm really curious why those can't be televised. Um, they've got the recordings anyway. The public would really like to know. And you're doing the bulk of your work at these workshop meetings. And, and specifically with HITA, and I know some of you are, are members of HITA, specifically with HITA, you talk in code. Um, things like, uh, a motion to approve item, the, uh, the loan that we discussed under item one at our workshop meeting in the amount that we discussed. That is not public information. That is, that is using the workshop to shield, uh, shield, uh, the public from information, and that's not okay. It's a violation of the open meeting law, and you should quit doing it. Um, I would personally like to see the packets that you hand out at your workshop meetings, uh, posted online somewhere. Because then at least you could follow along. Um, I noticed that just a couple of years ago, you went from referring to buildings and property as, by their kind of common known name, so people knew what you were talking about, to using now only property numbers. That again is subterfuge. And that's not gonna help create a better Hibbing. Okay? I've been amazed at the people that we've met at the park. Um, people are very connected to Cobb Cook in a real emotional way. And it is kind of a central gathering spot for people on our, on the west side of town. Okay. Um, so I think that by better informing the public, uh, I think that you could garner a lot of support, and I think you could find some elbow grease and some really good ideas in Hibbing. Um, we just need more of us to, to be able to be involved, and that can't happen unless you make a concerted effort to make sure that we know what's going on, especially now that we don't have a newspaper. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
Next up is Ashton Martin.
We have some letters here. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, did everybody get one?
I think Justin's, Justin's.
Thanks.
Need more?
Are these all of them? Yeah. Okay.
Hello. My name is Ashton Martin, and I am one of the founders of the Cobb Cook Coalition. What we've presented you here with today is each a copy of your own letter from the citizens of Hibbing. So in front of you, you have over 800 signed letters in opposition to the building of this project at this location. You also have in front of you a copy of Ansley's Covenant, and you have a copy of, um, words of endearment from, uh, Cook's mom. So I'll kind of go into that with my speech. I am a lifelong resident of Hibbing, as were my parents and grandparents before me. I am here today to discuss the historical and sentimental value of Cobb Cook Park. Some of my fondest memories of childhood are those where I remember walking the beautiful landscape with its trees and green serenity and playing youthfully at the playground. Today, I pass those wonderful memories to my children. We cherish the gift this park offers us, a space to spend quality time with our children, families, neighbors, and nature. Since starting this initiative to save the park, I have been delightfully overwhelmed by the groundswell of support from Hibbing citizens who also share my emotional attachment to this park spanning generations. For over 100 years, children and families have been utilizing this space for that very purpose, to strengthen the bonds of family and the community. This was the intent of the land's original donor, and it remains to be the intent of the community today. In Hibbing's infancy, the town's population was expanding rapidly as the mining industry offered wealth to the families and the village of Hibbing. It is here that Hibbing's forefathers intently planned the future of Hibbing, a well-designed city of residential neighborhoods and parks. Our early mayors/pioneers were praised for their forward-thinking ideas for this city, the result being a large city comprised of small neighborhoods filled with charm and municipal spaces. Frank Ansley is one of these pioneers, and it is he who gave this land to us with the intent that it always remain a park owned by the public. Hibbing is also praised for its monumental effort during the World Wars. Hibbing boys would go off to war, and the entire town would gather for parades and send-offs. It was during this time, World War I, that the planning of the park occurred, with the park being named by the community and Ansley to honor Hibbing's World War I soldiers before Ansley had even transferred the land or the planning of the school had occurred. These boys made the ultimate sacrifice for their country and the freedoms enjoyed by the community. The community then chose to honor them by naming the school, park, and the American Legion post after these brave men. We fight to preserve this honor. And then that's in front of you. You should have a poem from Earl Cook's mother written in grief about the loss of her son. We come here today to ask the council to correct this. We ask the council to further review their park study, and you will see that there is no basis for selling this park. Nowhere in the park study does it mention that Cobb Cook is underutilized or undervalued by the citizens of Hibbing. Rather, it further supports the preservation of parks like this that offer both large green spaces and playground equipment. The park study completed by 715 residents described as a statistically significant portion of the population were never asked the question of which parks should be sold. Now we present to you over 800 letters from citizens, more than a statistically significant amount of the population, saying, "Not this park." more than a statistically significant amount of the population, saying not this park. We recognize the need for good housing for all citizens of this community.
One minute, Ashton.
But Hibbing has a bad plan with no citizen input, the result being a now-divided community fighting over the same resource. This never should have happened. We now know that the purchase agreement has been signed by the mayor, ahead of you hearing from us, and that the only way to preserve this park in accordance to Ansley's covenant, as being publicly owned, is to stop the funding of this project. We now ask the city council to rescind its letter of support for the HRA project of Cobb Cook Place at this location and support the initiative to keep this land in its entirety publicly owned. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ashton. Next up is George Bogacznik. George, name and address, and then five minutes.
George Bogacznik, I live at 105 East Seventeenth Street. I'm on the Hibbing Plan Crew for the Utilities. I'm also on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm kind of curious. I got a bunch of stuff. Why it wasn't, none of this for the park get changed, didn't go through planning and zoning? What is it zoned at? Is it zoned as a park or is it zoned as residential? And then the other things I have is the manholes on First Avenue. Can we maybe see about getting them fixed? They're not at proper depth. I see a lot of vehicles swerving around them. There's sewer manholes, the one at Sunrise Bakery, Twenty-Eighth Street, Twenty-Ninth Street. There's a lot of low trees in town. Semi-trucks are hitting them quite a bit. All the low trees are on Boulevard property. See about maybe getting them trimmed in the future for trucks. I know you guys aren't doing any alley repairs, but there's a few alleys I know that get flooded out quite a bit from rain. I'd like to look at some of them. And then back to the planning and zoning. There's supposed to be more stuff give and take between us and planning and zoning. I'd like to see more of it, because a lot of times we're in the loop, and then we also get bypassed by you guys, which I don't think is right. That's basically all I got for today.
All right, I do want to make one comment, and that is we are starting an alley plan for refurbishing our alleys. So that is something we are just starting this year, and because it has been something that's been requested. So anyways, I just want to make that comment since you did bring that up. Thank you for your time and your comments.
Thank you.
Morgan Martin.
Hi, my name is Morgan Martin. I'm here with my sister. We started this Cobb Cook Coalition.
Do you need your address?
Twenty-eight, twenty-seven, First Avenue. Okay, I have something pre-written here. Only six months ago, on December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three, the Comprehensive City of Hibbing Parks and Trails Master Plan was published by Mayor Pete Heiduk. This plan notes input from just over seven hundred people, far fewer than the number who's signed our paper and online petitions to save the Cobb Cook Park in just the last two weeks. The city's comprehensive plan ironically encourages public input for future parks' planning on pages sixteen to nineteen, something that clearly has not been done with the Cobb Cook Park and your recent unanimous vote to sell the property. You can see Cobb Cook Park is shown on the maps on page twenty and twenty-one of the comprehensive plan. While it is not listed as a historic park on page twenty-five, and arguably it should be, it's shown on the master plan map and in the park classification section of neighborhood parks. In the neighborhood park section, Cobb Cook isn't mentioned as an opportunity, positively or negatively implying no plan change to it. In the noted recommendations, it was suggested to separately review neighborhood parks to potentially reduce the number of them. The historical value was listed as the first criterion to consider in retaining a park. Given the historical value of Cobb Cook Park, donated by the Ansley family, and named after the first and last man from Hibbing to die in World War I, we would expect Cobb Cook to be protected from any park removal list simply based on historical value. And the recommendation regarding contemporary uses, access to residents is listed as a key assessment criterion, as Cobb Cook Park is the only easily residentially accessible park in this section of the city without requirement to cross busy streets or highways. It should be excluded from a removal list and certainly not replaced with a pocket park. Last, it is recommended that a mini-master plan for these parks should evaluate the distribution of parks and facilities, analysis of condition and safety, and accessibility to residents. Additional engagement with residents and volunteer groups will be necessary to help determine change of use or programming. As the city just signed the agreement to sell the Cobb Cook Park to the HRA only six months after publishing this master plan, with this recommendation without any visibility to or engagement with the residents, it seems the city has blatantly ignored its own recommendation to include its residents in planning. Now, we ask you, in the five months between publishing this master plan, and you voted unanimously to sell Cobb Cook Park to the HRA without engaging residents, what has changed? The second point I want to address is the original land owner's deed restriction that states this land should only be used as a public park or returned to the donating family. I now ask you why you have bypassed and refused to honor this intention. It is clear Frank Ansley wanted this land to be and remain a shared neighborhood and community resource in perpetuity. And from nearly thirteen hundred petition signatures collected recently, as well as numerous calls, emails, and direct appeals to all of you, it is clear that current residents also want this property to be retained as a shared public park now and in the future. We ask that you, for you to reverse your decision to sell this property to the HRA. We also ask that you help us protect this historical neighborhood park for future generations by creating a conservation easement. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Avery Skolski, please.
Hi, my name's Avery Skolski. I live on Second Avenue West. I'm one of the kids that live near Cobb Cook Park. I'm here today not only speaking for myself, I am also speaking for all of the kids in my neighborhood. I would like to say that there are many different spots that the HRA could build or rebuild the apartment standing. Me, my siblings, and my friends would be very sad to see our neighborhood park demolished. A lot of kids in my neighborhood have been using this park for years, including generations of my own family. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Avery. We now move on to Stephanie Parks.
I'd like to approach the board to...
Stephanie, please announce...
Oh, Stephanie Parks, two-one-one-four, Second Avenue West of Hibbing.
Thank you so much.
Also, I'd like to announce my phone number, two-one-eight-nine-six-nine-three-two-three-one. I am running a program I started myself. Many, many years ago, twenty-one years ago, I helped open the garden that is at Cobb Cook Park. I also helped open the community garden in Nashwauk and many others since then. I have the Salvation Army behind me. They would like to put a food shelf garden in there. I have greenhouses willing to donate seed and plants to help do that, farms to help donate the dirt, and hopefully people with dump trucks to haul it. It should remain a park, and if not, the open space to help the people of our community, our food shelves. The low-income places, there's no place in our area that actually donates food just specifically for that. It's outdated food that's donated to our food shelves from Walmart, from Super One. Why is it waited till it's outdated? Why shouldn't it be fresh for the low-income people as well? I'm asking for the probation department to donate community service members or for anybody who has community service to please come and do it with that. I'm also helping Lakeview Behavioral Health in Virginia reopen their garden. The Allcock Greenhouse said they would give us a space in their nursery to bring up plants next year and to help out with this. And some of the other greenhouses have offered space in their nursery as well. And I just believe that it would be a better idea to help the people in that way. I'm not against putting in housing anywhere, but in that specific place, it should be kept as an open space for people to use for their enjoyment, for the green, and just for everybody. And with that, that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Brandon Maticz Modic.
Brandon Maticz, thirty-five oh-one, Second Avenue West. Here to talk about the plans to put up the apartments at the Cobb Cook Park. The park means a lot to the community, and it feels like nobody took the time to even talk to us about it. You're building a big apartment complex and taking something away from the community, but you didn't consult with us. And I feel it's your job as community leaders to know that you should have done that. You should have talked to us. You should have gone door-to-door around the area and spoken with people. You neglected to do that, and same with the HRA. I've raised my children here. We go to that park every day during the summer. I walk my dogs there. There's people there all the time. We ask that you change your minds. Look, have the HRA, get together with the community, work on a place where everybody's happy with it, because people deserve to have affordable housing. But everybody should have an input on where that goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Beth Dietrich.
Hi, my name is Beth Dietrich, and I live on Third West. I have been going to Cobb Cook Park since before I was able to walk. This park really means a lot to me, my friends, and this community. I do not understand why the city would take away this park from our community for some business or person to make money. Yes, money is important, but isn't a safe place for kids to play important to. I know there are other parks, but this one has been part of many generations and more generations to come. Yes, this is about saving the park, but it is also the fact that the HRA and the city of Hibbing tried to take the park without the consideration of the people and community it was affecting. There are many other places that they could build the apartments that would not be affecting our community or tearing down a park. I also feel that the elected community leaders are public servants that should be representing and speaking for the public they serve. The leaders that are supposed to be speaking for us in our area have shown poor leadership when looking at the impact it will have on our community. What I love about Cobb Cook Park is that it is in walking distance of my house. I have had fun times there with my friends and family at Cobb Cook Park, and I would be heartbroken if this park was ripped away from this community. I am speaking on behalf of all of the children that surround Cobb Cook Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Beth. Next up is Timothy Edglermer.
Timothy Inglemeyer, I live at thirty-five fifteen, Fourth Avenue West in Hibbing. First off, thank you, Chris, for getting my alley fixed. It is graded now, and I don't have to worry about any more struts being broken. So first of all, good evening, members of the Hibbing City Council. Thanks so much for allowing me to speak. I'm here to dialogue about my concerns with selling the Cobb Cook Park of Hibbing to the HRA. First, I want to read some of the benefits that is being taken away with the selling of the property. First of all, it increases tax revenues. Parks increase the property values, which increases tax revenues that's being taken away. Decrease medical costs through the increased exercise. It encourages people to get outside, and it's being taken away from them. It increases tourism revenue. It improves attractiveness to communities, to homebuyers, and businesses. Green spaces also filter rain, reducing water pollution, protecting drinking water. It also cools cities with the block top. It helps to cool the cities. Some of the things that should be considered with low housing income, or low-income housing, are property values decrease with low-income housing in the neighborhood. Low-income housing leads to overcrowding of neighborhoods. Traffic increases, leading to more accidents in our neighborhood. In fact, recently, I witnessed a car accident on the corner of Thirty-Fourth Street and Fourth Avenue West in the uncontrolled intersection. One thing that needs to be considered is that this will only increase with a big apartment complex. Another con is parking. It's already restrictive enough, and it's now going to be restricted even more with more people coming to the neighborhood. Hibbing is the largest city by area in Minnesota, just over one-hundred-and-eighty-six square miles. Why would we take away our only city park in this area of the city? Veterans Park, which was one of the parks suggested for us to use, has no swings for us, for our kids to play on. There's no slides for them to go down. It's a sledding hill, and it's about a mile away from my house. That is not within, it's not as in walkable distance as what the Cobb Cook Park is. That's three blocks from my house. As long as there are homes in our neighborhood, our Cobb Cook Park doesn't need to be sold. It should have been updated. Instead of selling it, we should have upgraded to better basketball hoops, better playground equipment, inclusive for all kids and ages. For a while, our family had one vehicle, and this was within walking distance of where we live. One thing that should also be considered is if the HRA can't even maintain what it currently has, why are we investing or letting them invest in a new building that they're probably not even going to be able to keep up on? The well-being of many families in this neighborhood is at stake and being taken away by selling this. As taxpayers and citizens of Hibbing, we have a say. We elected all of you to represent what the people of Hibbing are looking for, and this is clearly not it. When the Ansley family gave this park, it was gifted with the expectation that it was going to stay a park, not be sold to the HRA. We were looking to keep this park public, but clearly it's been sold now. We need more affordable housing, but why here? There's plenty of other places to consider. One last question. If all of you were to put yourselves in our shoes, would you want your favorite park or neighborhood being taken away and developed? That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Hey. Tim, thanks for your comments. Next up is Paul Pelter.
Paul's in the hole.
Paul?
Yep. Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Paul Pelter. I'm the Executive Director of Rams, the Range Association of Municipalities and Schools. We are based in Mountain Iron. I'm not here today to discuss any particular project specifically. I'm here to talk about the regional housing conversation that the Iron Range is having right now. Truly, this is an impactful issue affecting every single one of our communities. And as you can see from the conversation today, it has been a robust conversation. And I don't mean it snidely or glibly, but I'm very glad to see so many people are engaged and concerned about housing in general across the range, because every single housing study indicates in every community that housing choices of all types are what are required for successful communities. These are both choice-driven as well as employer-driven. One of the really kind of shocking statistics is that the salary needed to afford a median-priced home in this area is forty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. And if you kind of game that out, that's twenty-five bucks an hour. So somebody who is working as a cashier at L&amp;M, I'm not sure they're making twenty-five bucks an hour. I'm not sure that a first-year teacher... I'm not sure that a first-year teacher has an easy time affording a home. And so the fact that this community is engaged in housing is overall a very good thing. But we know that the need for housing affects our employers. The hospital, for example, is used to having a ninety-five percent employment rate, but they have around a ninety percent employment rate now because they can't find housing for doctors, housing for nurses, housing for, for staff and, and P S As. So the need for housing is real, and choices of all types across every strata of the community is also very real. Um, we know that when housing stock grows, so does the wealth within a community. And that goes for apartment housing, that goes for single-family housing, that goes for when a Habitat House gets built. Nathan Thompson and, and St. Louis County Habitat is the largest housing developer in St. Louis County right now, and they build six units a year. Every time a Habitat House goes in, the tax base increases and property taxes go down. And truly, this engaged community will reach the decision that's in the best interest for this community. We have so many needs for different types of people across our communities. That everyone has a place to live is a priority for Rams, and it's a priority for all of our communities. I know you care deeply about each and every resident within the city of Hibbing. Regionally, we have been convening a conversation around housing for the past three years. And officials from the city of Hibbing, as well as the H R A, as well as community members and developers, have been engaged in that work. And we see that from Grand Rapids to Ely, from Silver Bay to Aiken, and everywhere in between and across every community, they're struggling with some of the same questions that this community is struggling with right now. And I want you to know that um it seems that the city of Hibbing is tackling all of these challenges head-on, and they are in many ways leading the way in their ability to, to tackle these questions in a healthy manner. Data is important. Information is important, and sharing is also very important. And as you work through this process, just know that housing will continue to be the thing that hamstrings a community's growth unless they tackle it in a way that works for them and that they're able to make positive steps forward. And so I just want to wish you well in your conversation on this topic, but know that there are many people across the range who are dealing with these types of issues and trying to tackle them in a way that works for their communities and will yield benefits. Now, what, the final thing that I would leave you with is that a direction is important. Communication is important. And as you seek to find a healthy way to, to navigate that, I would hope that those things would continue to be your compass and your north star. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Next up, Jackie Prescott.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you for your consideration of our project and
Jackie, I do need the address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jackie Prescott, H R A of Hibbing. Um, three-one-one-five Seventh Avenue East. So Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for your consideration of our project and action that has taken place to date. And thank you to everyone who spoke today regarding this project. It is important that everybody's voice is heard. Special thanks to Heather for having the courage to speak on their behalf and for your neighbors. We are still assembling the project application and hope to have it completed by July one for submission. The proposed site is competitive for funding through Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. They prioritize sites and develop areas where utilities are readily available with access to transportation and within walking distance of retail, health services, and schools. The H R A, along with the assistance of the city of Hibbing's Community Development Director, has made a concerted effort in identifying the ideal location of new workforce housing for some time. Some of the places we have considered include behind the Southview Apartments, which had ground conditions that wouldn't work. Uh, the former Forest Heights Trailer Park, too far from the walkable community resources. There's also a Brooklyn property located on Thirteenth Street between Thirteenth and Fourteenth Avenue, which wasn't large enough, even when combined with an adjacent property that was between Fourteenth and Fifteenth Avenue. The former city garage at eighteen forty First Avenue, it had environmental contamination. There was uh one-one-nine-zero-zero block of Highway sixty-three, which was too far from the walkable community resources. The soil conditions were not acceptable for housing as well. Uh, we did look at Ansley Road. Uh, there had soil conditions that also weren't suited, suitable for housing. Additionally, we looked at the forty-one-hundred block of Ninth Avenue West. It had a high cost and wasn't large enough, and has since been developed by a private developer. The H R A has also looked at the property behind the Seventh Avenue Apartments. Um, it is wetlands and therefore not, uh, it would not be buildable. Some of the parcels that we have applied for M H F A for funding in the past, um, we looked at the site across from the Big Power Park and submitted an application for that, but the walkability score was too far, so we didn't score well on that one. Um, and then behind Walmart, um, we did have that one secured for funding or for an application, excuse me. Um, but that has since changed ownership, and that is not a, a rate, a price that we could pay for affordable housing there. Additionally, our last tax credit application was on the existing H R A site. Um, this plan included a three-story building right next to the transfer station, which really wouldn't be ideal for residents, but it was something to get some action for that um complex. Uh, the only fundable approach for this application at that time was for housing preservation, which would mean we have to stay on the same site. The preferences have since changed, and we've switched to workforce housing, which allows us to move to alternative site. Additionally, there have been some changes at the federal level in the repositioning program, which allows us to move the subsidies that we currently have at the Greenhaven Apartments to an alternative location. So from our current development, we have partnered with Center City Housing and have enlisted experienced architects, development, and repositioning consultants on a national level. This has been my sounding board, seeking input of experts in the field. Housing is not about me or our community alone. As you have heard, this is a regional and statewide issue. This application for Cobb Cook Place has the most merit to date, including walkability, infrastructure in place, and in a developed neighborhood. The proposed project also fits the characteristics of the neighborhood for a four-story apartment complex that's on an adjacent lot. Through discussions with Range Mental Health Center, which supports this project, they have offered the use of green space in the south corner of the property to expand recrea- recreational areas for the entire neighborhood and community members.
One minute, Jackie.
What?
One minute.
Okay. Um, our organization has been proactive in change and collaboration. In twenty-twenty-one, we were designated a move-to-work agency by HUD and created an empower program with self-sufficiency as our priority. To date, we have six families that have graduated to homeownership, ten people who are currently working towards an associate's or bachelor's degree, and seventy individuals who have obtained gainful employment through our partnerships. This just shows that we, as an H R A, are more than just housing. Hibbing is at a pivotal point, and I implore the council to keep the current and future generations in mind. We want people to choose our community, and to do so, we must provide housing options. If we don't secure this funding, some other community will get it, and we will still be in the same predicament with housing. The city has identified quality of life and housing as a priority in your strategic plan. We are proposing just that. We would appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes our public forum. All right.
Um, Mayor, can I just make a quick comment?
You may.
Um, I just want to thank everybody uh for speaking and sharing uh both your fe- feedback and input. Uh, truly appreciated the speakers on the front lawn today. Great to hear from them. The need for this project uh is great, and housing continues to be a crisis, especially for our low-income sector. Um, I know everyone is looking for what is best for the city and best for the community, but sometimes there'll be citizens that the change has a negative impact on. But with that said, uh, the questions and feedback that we hear about the reduction of currently utilized green space, increased congestion in the neighborhood, options in the communities, our options for community input, and lack of partnership, does not really make this a project that I could support at this time. Uh, if the H R A can come to agreement with the community that these changes affect, then I could definitely support it. But until then, I believe that this location should be tabled and that the city should resend its support for this location.
All right, thank you, Beth. With that, again, I would like to thank everybody for being here tonight and how cordial everybody was, letting everybody speak, and it was nice hearing what everyone had to say. Everybody had great talking points. You're welcome to stay through the remainder of our council meeting. It's actually enjoyable to have uh this many people here. Or you can uh excuse yourself and leave, so. But anyways, I really appreciate the passion, the support, and uh thank you for being here tonight.
Your Honor, one question. No reason that you wouldn't have our apartment complex. Maybe the chief is something.
Right now, we can't. You would need it to have approach. Yeah, it would have been no problem. Yes, you're welcome.
May I put this down? It's in my bag. Can you take it down?
Okay, we'll move on to uh Department Committee reports. Uh, first, under me, Offer Resolution Number twenty-four zero six zero seven, declaring a state of emergency from the storm that uh came through last week. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Move on to Ms. Mullner, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Item A is to authorize posting a notice in regard to changes to Chapter Two of the city ordinance in regard to changes to city purchasing. Um, the agenda item does, does speak out for calling for a public hearing, which um Attorney Borland did say we do not have to have a public hearing for this um since it doesn't relate to zoning, so I would like to just scratch that part of it for the record. Um, the changes that we would like to make to this ordinance would be in subdivision three, um, section E. We would like to, instead of referencing the threshold, um, where it says that we would like, instead of having the threshold be listed in there, we would like it to refer to our city's purchasing policy. Um, and then in section G, we would like it to have it changed to refer, referencing the state statutory provisions. Um, and then on the next page in subdivision four, would strike out the urgent expenditures and have it refer to the emergency purchase statute. Um, so pretty much I'm looking to change it so that it references this, this state of Minnesota statutes as well as the city's policy as we change it. Um, this ordinance has not been revised since two thousand and twelve was the last time it was revised, so. I'm just looking for the city council to authorize posting the notice, and then the action would be taken at our next meeting on July tenth.
Okay. So you want uh, I didn't hear your last comment.
Um, it would be posted, and then we would actually take action on changing it on July tenth. Yes.
Thank you. This is an update. All right, then move on to B.
Well, they, you actually just have to approve the language changes that we'll post them.
All right.
Yeah, I'd make that motion.
All right. We have a motion by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hoffman-Sotman. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheena. Move on to City Service Director, Mr. Rowley.
Um, Mayor?
Yes.
I did have an ad, which was item B.
It's number B.
Oh, that's what I had said, B. I'm sorry. I needed to move it first. B, go ahead.
So item B is to approve the revised service design for Hibbing Area Transit. Um, as you know, TacTran is in receivership, and the contract actually ended June thirtieth. They have agreed to extend the contract through July thirty-first. Um, but they have come before us with a request that they have a shortage of drivers as well as dispatchers. They are not looking to make any recruiting of any new staff at this time, being that they plan to dissolve at the end of July. Um, and then we also have still had issues with procurement with our buses still not coming in, so we're, we're short on buses, and we need to be able to have time to service those as well. Um, so the request came across from the manager, who is currently operating TacTran, um, to make some changes to the service design through the rest of the period through July thirty-first. Um, the changes that would be reflected, um, currently, we go till Monday through Friday. Currently, the bus operates from six AM to eight PM. Um, the bus would now operate from six AM to six PM. Saturdays wouldn't change. It would still be from nine AM to four-thirty PM. Um, but the bus would be closed on Sundays. Um, so that would, that would accommodate their limited staff being able to drive and dispatch the bus.
Okay.
Um, I'm open for any questions as far as um the changes they requested.
All right, well, hearing what uh Ms. Mullner had to say, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Discussion. We have no other option, correct?
That is correct. Um, I mean, we've gone out for R F P. Those were due May thirty-first. We had no proposals for an alternative operator. So really, all we're doing right now is trying to accommodate the operator who's trying to do everything they can to continue for us.
Trying to close out his contract.
Yep.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheena.
Thank you.
Move on to City Service, Mr. Rowley.
Acting Resolution twenty-four dash oh six oh five to apply for an IRRR uh Recreation and Tourism Grant. This would be in uh conjunction with the Hibbing Raceway Association and uh doing some upgrades on their lighting system out at the track. So just looking to apply for that grant at the uh, the next uh window here in July.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Rowley had to say, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Hoffman-Sotman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Schwiberg. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Nick. Mr. Przynski.
Uh, he's on crowd control, I believe.
Well, we can uh move to bids and quotes and come back to Mr. Przynski when he gets back in. Okay, so we'll move on to uh bids and quotes. Andy, we do not have you under five A then, correct? Nothing today?
Right.
Very good. We'll move on to bids and quotes. Superintendent Waste Water Treatment, Mr. Hurd.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
Um, I gave you guys a couple uh bids to rehab our chlorine uh and sulfur dioxide building. Um, this would include uh new LED lights, heaters, some exhaust fan, new ductwork, uh mandor. Um, this is a really engrossed, engrossed environment, and it kind of eats buildings up. Most of this stuff is uh safety-related. Uh, currently, it's not. The fans aren't working, so if you go in there, you're supposed to have fan working just in case you have a chlorine leak. I'm asking that you uh award a bid to Iron Range Electric LLC in the amount of forty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars.
Very good. Hearing what uh Mr. Hurd had to say regarding uh rehab the chlorine building. Wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Schwiberg. Support by Counselor Whitney.
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, City Service again, Mr. Rowley.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, next up on my list, you're looking for your approval on a quote um from Iron Oaks Fencing, and this is also in partnership with the Raceway Association. Uh, this is to repair roughly uh three hundred and sixty feet of six-foot-high chain link and then also replace uh another four hundred and twenty feet of a ten-foot catch fence out at the uh, the raceway. This would come out of our, our Raceway Capital Fund that we have, and uh just looking for your approval to move forward with that. Uh, lighting and fencing were their two number, or were their top two needs out at the racetrack, and we're trying to address uh those two things right now, so.
So we're looking for uh Mr. Rowley for approval to uh, for Iron Oaks to repair fencing at the raceway. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Or by Counselor Hildebrand. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. Um, so in approving this, when would this work be completed?
Uh, immediately. They're gonna start. So I, I don't have a completion for you, hopefully in the next month.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. B, Nick.
Uh, item B, I have uh members from I C S and uh D S G W here for a quick presentation on the uh Item B, I have members from ICS and DSGW here for a quick presentation on the City Hall renovation and where bids came in at, and looking for your approval to move forward on some of these bids.
Very good.
All right. Damian Williams with ICS, Project Director, and I got Brandon Miller here, Project Engineer. Hibbing City Hall renovations, bid recommendation, June 26, 2024. Agenda items for us, review bidding information, and then our bid recommendation. So bidding information, on bid day, we received nine bids for four work scopes. Originally, we put the bids out, we requested for three work scopes. Based on input from the general contractors, we actually went to four work scopes and added restoration as a standalone work scope. Unfortunately, on bid day, we did not receive any general construction bids. We are, we do have a plan for that, we'll talk about that in a second. We received four bids received for mechanical, that'd be work scope two, four bids received for electrical, which would be work scope three, and then one bid received for the building restoration work. Seven proposals were received after, this is kind of more of a, after we found out we did not have general construction works, bids for general construction, we received, we went and we actually took the work that was in that package and actually solicited proposals. We knew the work was under $175,000 threshold, so we went and got multiple bids from contractors that we'd be able to still consider to contract here. Include two window proposals, three roofing proposals, and two clock proposals. So our bidding matrix, so on bid day, this is, so our general construction, we have an unallocated amount right now. There is some work remaining that we're going to need to work closely with staff to complete, and that'd be the infill of the windows at the base of the clock tower. I believe there's seven windows that would be infilled, and there's going to be one small mini door that would access the west roof. So breaking that up, roofing, the low bidder was Nelson Roofing at $164,957. Windows, Masabi Glass, $30,024. And then the clock, Lumacron Commercial Clocks, $55,052. Work scope two mechanical was AG O'Brien Plumbing and Heating, $283,112.51. Electrical was Hart Electric, $17,500. And then our building restoration number came in very, very high at $1,550,000. We have steps for what we're going to talk about with building restoration at the conclusion of the recommendation here. Any questions on any of those numbers? They are in your packets, along with all the bids we received.
I just have one question. Building restoration is everything in unison on how they work? Meaning, you're doing your clock tower, you're doing electrical, you're doing the mechanical. Does building restoration have to happen at the same time? I mean, since it came in so high, I guess you're going to tell us you are addressing some issues on that?
Correct, correct. In fact, what we're looking to do, our strategy is going to be to do all of the work that we are asking for today to get contracted, and then we're going to be looking at doing the building restoration next spring.
Okay. Would that be rebid then, since it's next spring?
Well, we have some ability to, because we only received one bid for the building restoration, we don't have the ability to negotiate with that contractor. So right now, we're working with that contractor to see what options we have, and we're going to be bringing, in a couple of weeks, we'll be bringing back at the next council meeting some options on what we can do for building restoration.
So the building restoration is our perimeter, upper perimeter of the main building plus the clock tower?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I had one. I was just curious, how much, what was the difference between what the expected cost for that piece was versus what the bid came in at?
Roughly about $900,000?
I was going to say, it was pretty big, right?
Yep, so the gentleman that provided some estimating for the city and for us when we worked through the work scope, actually did not bid the project, but he had mentioned that the deterioration has taken place since he started doing some of this estimating for the city, that it's actually gotten quite a bit, quite a bit more deteriorated, so.
How long ago did that process start?
Probably years.
It's all years ago.
Okay.
Twelve years ago.
Okay.
Twelve years ago.
Thank you.
Next slide, we have just our recommendation letter that we'd like to enter contracts into, enter these, enter into, or want to execute these contracts for the work scope number two mechanical, AG O'Brien, work scope three electrical, Hart Electric, windows, Masabi Glass, roofing Nelson Roofing, and then the clock Lumacron Commercial Clocks. That's what we're looking for approval for today. All of those, all of those contracts would total $550,645.51. That's what we'd like to have approval action on today, with that work starting as soon as we can actually get materials procured and looking at, you know, getting that work completed this fall. Restoration, our next steps with restoration, so we did meet with that low bid contractor this morning. Nick joined us along with Eric from DSGW. We did review the current scope, and we reviewed some cost-saving measures. We are going to be bringing, we're going to meet with staff and discussing some of the options here, and then we're going to be making a recommendation with staff, with staff input on next steps with that, with that work. It's interesting, a lot of interesting things got brought up today. I think we have some opportunities to do some building preservation and make sure that we're doing the right thing to, you know, do the right thing for the next 10 years with the building. So that's our goal.
Very good. I appreciate your update, and any questions from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you. So Nick, what you're looking for is approval on the 500, what was the amount?
Correct, it was 500, 550,000, or what was it?
Council, we just had a presentation on what they want to address, starting as soon as possible at that amount that Nick had just mentioned, wishes of the council.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Schweber.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We move on to Fire Chief, Mr. Jankula.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The first item before you is to authorize the purchase of an auto-load system for our new ambulance that we have on order. We did not spec one with our new ambulance due to cost, and we were really going to plan on trying to refurb one of the ones out of the rigs we were going to retire. They do get a lot of hours and a lot of lift mechanisms on them. We have an opportunity to buy a demo that's actually never lifted a person, it's only been at trade shows for literally 50% of the cost. So speaking with the administrator and Ms. Mulner, the $17,000 request that we're asking for would come from undesigned funds. We're looking for approval.
Okay, demo power load system for the ambulance, wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Hoffman-Sachman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Hildebrand. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Eric, B.
The second one for you is authorizing the upfitting with lights, sirens, et cetera, for one of our new squad trucks that we've ordered. They actually called today and said it has arrived. This funding would come from the one-time funding that we were given through Police and Fire through the state of Minnesota in the last legislative session. M&amp;M Auto Body was the low quote, and they actually beat the state bid quote of EATI, and we're asking to approve the purchase and the installation of such equipment from M&amp;M Auto Body in Nashua for $12,369.19.
Okay, hearing what Mr. Jankula had to say regarding light sirens, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil. Support by Counselor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, C.
The second, or the third one is for a commercial topper for that same pickup truck. We had quotes received from M&amp;M Auto Body and the state bid vendor out of North Central Sales in St. Cloud, and M&amp;M Auto Body is the low bid for the exact same topper of $49,118.10, and we're asking for the authorization to purchase that.
Okay. Hearing what Mr. Jankula had to say about a commercial topper, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Counselor Schweber. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, D, Chief.
It's going to be for a fiberglass topper for the other squad truck that we have on order for our battalion chiefs. M&amp;M Auto Body came in as the low quote of $25,90. We did get a second quote from Z-Tech in town. M&amp;M Auto Body was the low quote, and we're looking for authorization to purchase that also.
All right, hearing what Chief Jankula had to say regarding additional topper, wishes of the council.
Motion.
Motion approved by.
Motion to approve.
Counselor Hoffman-Sachman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. E, Chief.
And the last one is the upfitting of the lights and sirens, et cetera, for our new battalion squad truck. We did get two quotes, M&amp;M Auto Body and the state bid of EATI out of Duluth. M&amp;M Auto Body were recommending to do the purchase, they were $3.22 above state bid. We will save that just in labor of delivering the truck to Duluth and back, and I'm asking that we just give M&amp;M Auto Body the work for that truck also.
Okay, looking for authorization for upfitting for Battalion One, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Counselor Schweber. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. We'll move back to Mr. Przynski, City Administrator.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. A couple of items from my office this morning, or this evening, I should say. Item number one is the approval of a lease agreement between the City of Hibbing and the Iron Range Raceway Association. It's an issue that we had talked about during a workshop. The raceway had a 1940s-era grader that conked out, I think the tranny gave out. But with some of the changes we've made in equipment, we had a grader that was getting ready to be rolled out of service here and sold. So after the conversation with the city council, it was deemed appropriate to go ahead and put together a low-cost lease with the association to make sure that they've got the ability to grade the track, because without a track, they of course can't have a show. So the agreement is in front of the city council this evening. There is a clawback provision in that lease agreement. The agreement is for an annual charge of $500 for the use of that piece of equipment. Maintenance is going to be provided by the association through the local college, and there's a bunch of other stuff in there. I could probably go and read it verbatim if you so desire, but the point is, is that is all put together and it's ready to go. I can answer questions if you have any, otherwise consideration and action would be appreciated.
Okay, hearing what Ms. Przynski had to say regarding the lease agreement with Iron Range Racing Association, wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Counselor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. B.
So the other thing that I wanted to bring to the city council for consideration is a resolution to support the Public Utility Commission and their endeavor to implement their long-term capital plan. This issue has been workedshopped with the city council. It was brought up during our joint meeting with the Public Utility Commission. I tried to capture some of the details without going overboard. It's about $7.6 million overall. It's a PFA loan. We know that the PFA has low-interest loans for city infrastructure, so I can try to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, consideration and action would be appreciated.
Okay, so what you're saying is support for that application for water infrastructure?
Yep, through resolution.
Would be similar to the last PFA loan that we supported?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Wishes of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Hoffman-Sachman.
Support.
Support by Counselor Bayless. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. C, just report.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. One item I just want to talk a little bit about this evening is our efforts to clean up after the flood. I know we took action this evening, so thank you for doing that. For some of our people that maybe are wondering what's going on, so we've set up five different drop-off zones, so our residents have the option to go, you know, clean out their basement, whatever happens to be the case. One of those five zones, they can drop at the dumpster. We're taking just general waste, carpet, furniture, appliances, that type of stuff. And then we are also conducting a curb-side pickup service. I know we've got a link on our website to the form, so people can provide their name and address, so we know where to go pick up. And I think we're planning to do that through the 30th of June, and then we'll have a final cleanup and get things back in order. I do want to address a specific area, 41st, kind of down by the Baptist Church. I know that there's a significant problem down there. I think it's been a problem for 10 or 15 or 20 years. Every time we get a substantial rain, let's just call it, I know the Baptist Church parking lot likes to flood. Just that whole area is low in general. That being said, I think we need to focus on making sure the water gets through that area a little bit quicker. Specifically, there's two runoff areas that are getting filled in with silt and trees. I know there's debris down there, maybe an old brick wall of some sort. I think maybe the culverts are undersized. The point being is, we have a study that was conducted 10 or 15 years ago. We're going to pull that out, we're going to take a look at the different recommendations and bring it back to the city council for consideration. I think the very first thing that we do is we clean out that runout area, because it's, the water isn't moving quickly enough to where it needs to go. The second thing we look at are the culverts, and are they sized big enough to get the water through that area quickly enough? And then we'll start to look at possible solutions for how to solve that neighborhood's problem when it comes to water. I made several site visits during that water event, and several residents had quite a bit of sanitary sewer in their basements, storm sewer. We need to address that for that neighborhood, so there'll be some additional discussion coming up in the not-too-distant future, so. Any questions I can try to answer?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, great, thank you for the update. I thought we looked at that and addressed some of those issues a couple of years ago when we were having that area flooding, didn't we not?
Yes, that's a great question. So what we looked at and what we did do is we cleaned out the area that would be north of 41st, because there is a lot of lands and debris, which I think helps during some of the smaller rain events. We also had intended on cleaning out the runout areas in the winter, but it never froze, so we couldn't get our equipment in there. So what I've asked our people to do is take a look at, can we get in there and survey it? And let's engage with some contractors and see if we can't get some equipment in there to do that clean-out work. So yes, we did do some work, we didn't do everything that needed to be done, we really only took the first step.
Great, thank you for the update.
And thank you for bringing it back.
Mr. Przynski, we, I know we've identified hotspots after the storm. Are, is there any areas? Are, are, uh, is there any areas we haven't done studies on that we could improve on? I mean, our stormwater sys- uh, system's actually pretty good. I think it's well-maintained, it's when you have five inches, you just, the volume, you can't project for that, but are there any other areas that have that similar situation where we maybe need to make a culvert a little bit bigger or do something that doesn't restrict?
So that's a great question, and there's a lot in there. So, yes, we have a heat map, we're tracking some of the problem areas, which I like. Um, I think we have some, some neighborhoods that traditionally, they just flood. Um, I think we do, uh, a fair amount of clean-out when it comes to that storm sewer. Um, I'd like to have a better plan, so it's very systematic and we can track it, we know where we've been. Um, and then the last thing that I would mention to that, Mr. Mayor, is I would like to take that heat map and then take that and, and do a study and prioritize and start to address some of these problems a little bit more systematically over time.
Very good.
I mean, that's a lot, but I, I think if we have a plan, at least we can then budget for it, and we can tell our residents, okay, we're gonna be in this area, we're gonna try to fix this. Um, in addition to that, when we go through a neighborhood with a, doing a street project or a water or sewer, we know where it's at and we have a better handle on what, what the action should be, so.
Very good, yes.
Uh, just one quick question on that same topic. Um, how did the treatment plant fare? Were they able to handle that amount of water? So, short answer is, they were able to handle the water, but it was a lot of water.
David.
Um, I think some of the actions that we've taken over time, the laterals, um, um, trying to address that clean water going into our sanitary sewer is starting to pay off. And the quicker we ex- expedite that and get that fresh water out of our treatment system, the better off all of our residents will be when it comes to some of these watering events, but also those costs will start to diminish and we'll start to get the rewards of that, so. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Any other questions? All right, then we will move on to, uh, license and permits. Approve the special, number one, approve the special event permit application request the Hibbing Historical Society to hold the Hibbing's one-hundred-and-thirty-first birthday at Hall, at the Hall of Service and Achievements induction on Wednesday, August seventh, twenty twenty-four, on the front lawn of City Hall. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sachman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweber. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Two, approve the temporary on-cell liquor license of the Aaron Horst House to dispense alcohol at the Hibbing Street Dance on Saturday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Three, approve the special event application of the Abide for Freedom, the Johnson family to hold their twenty-twenty-four Juneteenth celebration at Bennett Park on Friday, June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, from four PM to eight PM. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Four, approve the peddler's license of Muchi Archa to sell educational books door-to-door in the Hibbing area through August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Five, approve the twenty-twenty-four Transit Merchant License of Jeffrey Provenzino, Provenzino Race Cars High on the Hog to sell food in Hibbing. Wishes of the council.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sachman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. All, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Approve the twenty-twenty-four Transit Merchant License of Christopolas, a Taste of Italy, to sell coffee in Hibbing, pending Department of Health license. Wishes of the council.
Motion approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil. Support by, or, uh, Councilor Schweber.
Support. Support.
By Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Last, number seven, approve the raffle permit of Runamuck ATV Club to hold their raffle at Toivo's Pub on Saturday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Wishes of the council.
Motion approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Bayless. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries. Could I have motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Bayless.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion carries.